Meeting is returning to open session. Forum of the Board is present. The regular meeting of the State Board is reconvened. Ms. Evans, are there individuals who wish to address the Board during today's meeting?
Yes, there are people who have registered to provide public comment today, and I will review the rules. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes to address the Board, and I will keep track of time. We will be strictly following the time limit so that everyone has an opportunity to speak. Please finish your sentence and end your comment when the timer goes off. Thank you for your cooperation. It is the practice of the Board not to respond to comments during the public participation portion of the meeting. We will maintain an atmosphere of respect for all. Any person disrespecting anyone by name or otherwise will be asked to cease. Public participation will occur in person and virtually. We will begin with those persons that are physically in the room with us today and then move to the Q online. First person today is Andrew Pass. You can have a seat at the table. And whenever you're ready to begin, you may begin your three minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Andrew Pass, and I am the founder of an educational content development company that is based in Michigan, in West Bloomfield. And I've been going to school boards, meeting the people in charge of curriculum and instruction in the local districts. And I wanted to come to the State Board of Education as well, which has already been an illuminating meeting for me. And I want to share something. You might ask, so why do you develop customized content? And here's the answer. My own son, Michael, is now 29. And fortunately, he's in a really great trajectory for his life. But when he was in high school, he was not. It was very, very scary what happened to him. He was completely unengaged, completely alienated, on drugs, and came pretty close to death on multiple occasions. And at the time, I said, if Michael was 10 years younger, it would be so much easier for him to engage at school because the curriculum 10 years later would be so much better. It's now more than 10 years later, and the curriculum isn't so much better. And it's really scary. I do want to comment that the social and emotional support that you report that we just heard would have been great for him. But the curriculum is not much better. And what my company does after 15 years of working with publishers and providers developing content, we've realized that local content is far more important. So we're working with individual school districts and states, but we work with them to develop what they want. And it's developed between teachers and us. We bring in the research. And when I say teachers, we use artificial intelligence to do a survey across the state to understand what's important to them and their administrators, obviously. That's certainly not an argument for local control, but it is an argument for localizing content. Because if I'm a student in West Bloomfield, Michigan, the subway system in New York is not something that I'm immediately aware of. And so I need to be, I need to learn with things that are appropriate to where I am. So it's an honor for me to speak to you today. Thank you for hearing from me, and it's great to be part of Michigan.
Thank you so much. Next in the room is Shannon Seiko. Did I say that correctly? Seiko, okay. Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Well, thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm Shannon Seiko, and I'm a mom, a parent of five children. And I wanted to experience my first State Board School Board meeting in person today. So I am very concerned about some things that I heard today with all the talk here. You know, parents, as parents, we really need to have a voice in all these conversations. I am, I would really request to have Nikki's resolution on the agenda next time for the next school board meeting, you know. As a parent advocate too, I'm very concerned about the Board Education's lack of support on our special education families. The Board, you know, we should care about all the students. And, you know, we should care really much about the IEP and the 504 students as well. You know, parents are forced to bring in outside higher advocates to help support their needs in these schools. And, you know, that's not fair to them either because there are funding, obviously. But we just need to make sure the funding will go to our children directly. I just hope that you would reconsider looking into this. You know, because we need to look at the data. We need to look at all the good and the bad and to make our root cause adjustments to this, okay? You know, parents are being left out of the equation, okay? Parents are the experts. You know, we have the God-livened rights to direct our children in our education. And that is an important message that I'd like to leave here because every child is unique. You know, no one knows them best than their own parents. So I just wanted to leave you with that. And, you know, just really, really, we need to treat our student achievement as our top priority. Our children deserve that. They really do, okay? So thank you for this opportunity for speaking.
Thank you so much. We will now move to those in the Q online. Hello, caller. Can you hear me? Hello, caller. Hello. Hi, if you can hear me, will you please mute YouTube in the background?
Yes, I am. I'm here and waiting.
Thank you. If you'd please state your name and where you're calling from, you may begin your three minutes.
I'm watching the board meeting and somebody's talking.
Please, it's delayed online. So if you'll please mute it because it's your turn.
Got it.
Thank you.
My name is...
Please mute your YouTube, ma'am.
I'm trying. Give me one second.
Okay.
Okay, I'm ready.
Okay, very good. If you'll state your name and where you're calling from, you may begin.
My name is Marcy Lipsit. I live in Franklin, Michigan. I will keep this short. I know I have limited time. I am not disappointed. I'm outraged. And I say this as a lifelong Democrat. I'm outraged by the Democrats on this Board for not supporting Nikki Snyder and Tom McMillan's resolutions. It is not a question if the Michigan Department of Education has been found in violation of Section 504 in the complaint that I filed as a volunteer on March 10, 2021. They gave unlawful guidance. The fact that you don't want to understand this complaint, the fact that the superintendent didn't share it during a two-year investigation is outrageous. So the fact that you don't want to understand what is one of three federal civil rights investigations is shameful. Next, the fact that you don't want to understand how the 56 ISDs operate. They are cash cows. They siphon money. There's no reason to have 56 in the year 2024. They operate independently. So where a child lives dictates the quality or lack thereof of the special education programs and services. Michigan has hurled the turtle syndrome. We have 800 school districts. Five of those 800 service one to five students each, one to five. And those students receive $61,000 in per pupil state funding. We need a consolidation plan in Michigan, and we need an actuarial study because we don't need 56 ISDs siphoning money away from school districts. So to end this, I used to believe that taking away the State Board's elected authority was wrong. I don't because I think Engler accomplished what he wanted to. I think frankly, he turned at least the Democrats into the scarecrow, the lion, and the tin man in The Wizard of Oz. You have no courage, you have no guts, and you have no brain. And that's very, very, very wrong. I think you each need to look in the mirror and decide who you want to be and how you want to hold a superintendent you hire and fire accountable. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Hello, caller. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
If you'll please state your name.
Good afternoon.
Go ahead.
Hi, good afternoon. This is Katie McFarland. I'm a parent in Troy. While I'm not surprised, I'm incredibly disappointed that the Democrats on this Board shot down Ms. Snyder's outstanding resolution regarding the assistance of students with special needs in an audit to be conducted on exactly what has happened after the pandemic to special ed students. Tossing money at the problem is not the solution, and it's apparent that the Democrats have something to hide and do not believe in transparency to parents who have valid concerns as their children are being negatively impacted. Additionally, although not shocking, it is infuriating that the Democrats on this Board shot down Ms. Snyder's proposal on holding school staff to account in matters of safety, particularly when it came to the Oxford shooting and ensuring proper EOP measures are being met in the future. These were no-brainer resolutions. And as the Democrats on this Board refuse to even allow these to be placed on today's agenda, it simply exposes the fact that the Democrats do not prioritize the safety of students or truly providing the necessary services to students in need. Instead, we need to spend $1 million on tampons and maxi pads to potentially be placed even in the boys' restrooms if a school district chooses to do so. I truly hope more parents are starting to wake up to this level of lunacy. And this simply reinforces why my daughter will never be in public school. As always, thank you, Ms. Snyder and Mr. McMillan for being a continuous voice of reason on this Board. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, caller, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. If you'd please state your name and where you're calling from, you may begin your three minutes.
My name is Maria Giancatti. I'm calling from Oakland County, and I'm a special education advocate. And I'm also a parent of a disabled child. Special education system in Michigan schools is severely broken and ineffective that results in harm to students and their families. The legal violations are common and contribute to many significant problems, including school shootings, school violence, severe bullying, suspensions, expulsions, misuse of restorative practices, lifelong academic deficiencies, mental health problems, low literacy rates, and the school-to-prison pipeline. The contributing factors include failure to find and identify students that may have disability, which is required by our laws, schools denying parental requests for evaluations and special education support, violations of Section 504 and IDEA by school administration, parents' lack of knowledge about special education and civil rights laws, and lack of access to free or affordable advocacy or legal services. Disability-related complaints were the top complaints received by the Michigan Civil Rights Office in fiscal year 2122. We should all be ashamed that the landmark U.S. Supreme Court case of Perez versus Sturgis from March of '23 involved a family of a disabled child from our own state. Thank God the U.S. Supreme Court did the right thing and paved the way for other families. Special education is an area that impacts people across all political views. It's shameful and disgusting to see how this Board made it a political issue today. We are talking about a large percentage of marginalized students in Michigan, and there is nothing political about disability. I wish you could all spend one day in my shoes as an advocate. The phone calls I get from desperate parents are unbelievable and disturbing. Many students on my caseload with ASD have been denied evaluations and IEP. Children with dyslexia cannot get an IEP or any reading intervention, and none of this is okay. One client with two children, ages five and seven, were both up for expulsion due to behavioral problems. The special ed director flat out refused to provide evaluations after parental request. My involvement and my appeals to the School Board and administration citing all of their legal violations. They expelled the five-year-old, and three days later, an outside evaluation revealed an ASD diagnosis. They also expelled the seven-year-old, who too also went on to get diagnosed and receive an IEP at another school. Another child, age 10, with severe apraxia, who has already retained once entering third grade and cannot speak a three-word sentence due to his disability. The school refuses to provide extended school year speech support, even based on the severity of the disability as outlined in March. The school also refuses to put teaching the student how to use an AIC device into his IEP so he can communicate. I could go on about the awful cases that I have had and the unbelievable violations school makes. I speak passionately about this because of my own horrific experience as a parent. I never intended to be an advocate, but it happened out of necessity because when we moved from Illinois to Michigan, 80% of my son's services were removed from his IEP.
Thank you very much, caller. Thank you very much for your public comment today.
This is not political.
Caller, can you hear me?
Yes, hi, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Sure can. Whenever you're ready, please state your name and where you're calling from, and you may begin public comment.
Sure. My name is Michelle Melzik, and I'm calling from Troy, Michigan. I'm going to go ahead and begin.
Please.
Good afternoon. My name is Michelle Melzik. I am a parent in the Troy School District and a former elementary educator. I'm calling to speak to you about several key issues in the state of Michigan affecting our students. I'm the parent of a child that has dyslexia. We have struggled in the Troy School District. I have witnessed firsthand the struggles of parents of children with disabilities. We have spent hundreds of hours and thousands of dollars on private tutoring lessons to support our seven-year-old daughter. We were forced to hire an advocate. The struggles in our family, they're not unique. I have encountered and connected with parents all over Michigan that have similar situations and stories. Our daughter could have received intervention and instruction from the public school. Unfortunately, everything that the school does works against current recommendations from the Michigan Dyslexia Handbook and current best practices. Our struggles are not unique. We need to act now. Our students, like my daughter, will continue to fall further behind. Districts like Troy will continue to rely on curriculum and assessments by Lucy Coffin and Francis and Pennell. At this point, we're now considering sending our daughter to private Catholic school where she would receive structured literacy instruction as part of her regular curriculum during a regular school day. When parents leave the public school, it will further impact the budget and other students. We need to do better for our most vulnerable students like my daughter, Grace. I completed a Freedom of Information Act request, and I wanted to point out that my local school district has only sent one teacher to the dyslexia letters training. We have $10 million available on grant-funded training for this. Yet we've only sent one teacher from our school district. We need to do better. I also want to call to support the resolutions proposed today. I call on you to reform governmental immunity.
My apologies. Oh, so sorry. Oh, no.
Do you have her number? You can call her back.
I'm sorry, caller. I accidentally hit mute. Mike, can you unmute her?
I think I might need to be unmuted using the phone. We can unmute from here.
Caller, if you can hear this over YouTube, if you'll please call back. Mike, can we move to the next caller, and we'll reconvene her comment? Hello, caller. Can you hear me?
Yes.
If you'll please state your name and where you're calling from, you may begin your comment.
Hi, I'm Crystal Paulson. I am a, from Dearborn. I'm one of the Dearborn mom. My son is going into his first grade. He has ASD. He also is medically diagnosed. And I was supposed to be there in person today, but obviously, things happen. I would like to clear up some of this information about educational diagnosis and medical diagnosis because my son, who receives medical therapy for his ASD, he is not allowed to have educational services because it interacts with the medical. So I would like to see medical and educational, specifically with the ASD, combined services because of the funding. The funding is there. My son, who also receives funding through TOT along with Wayne Riza, everything. The services that he receives through those programs was nothing compared to what he receives medical. So if my son, who receives these medical services for ASD, why is there no opportunity for the educational ASD students in our state to receive both, both of the services? Because don't they, aren't they owed that? And furthermore, the funding. I know Dearborn, the funding is cut, what, 28%? So where's the funding? And the fact that Nikki has put a resolution forward. I will be there in attendance in October for the next meeting. And as an ASD mother, I hope you guys will put that resolution up to a vote because we, as the parents, we have a right to advocate and rally for the best for our kids because we know them the best. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Hello, caller. Thank you for calling back in. Yes, I apologize. You'll have one minute remaining. I'm sorry for whatever technical issue happened, but you'll have one minute to be able to conclude. Are you still there? Michelle, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead. You'll have one minute remaining, okay?
Okay, so I just want to conclude. I completed a Freedom of Information Act request, and I wanted to point out that my local school district has only sent one teacher to dyslexia letters training. We've had $10 billion available and grant-funded money available for this training. I also want to call support to the resolutions proposed today. I call on you to reform governmental immunity when significant injury or death occurs at Michigan schools. Schools also need to be held accountable when it comes to incidents involving severe injury or death. We need to do better for Michigan's most vulnerable students here, our special education students and our students with disabilities. I'm really disappointed with what I see today at the Board of Education meeting, both as a parent of a young child in public school and also as a former educator. Thank you for allowing me to speak today, and I hope you'll consider my comments.
Thank you for your patience, caller. Have a good day. Mike, are there any other callers that have pre-registered for public comment today?
That is the last individual on the line.
Thank you so much. That concludes public participation.
Thank you, Ms. Evans, Mr. Fluminio. At 1:37, Board, we are going to move to a presentation on voter preregistration. Presentation on voter preregistration information will highlight Public Act 258 of 2023, which requires a voting preregistration and registration public education and outreach campaign. The campaign focuses on ensuring that individuals who are at least 16 years of age and who are eligible to preregister to vote or who are eligible to register to vote are informed of the opportunity and available methods to preregister to vote or register to vote. We welcome our presenters. Agogo Edavie, Deputy Secretary of State, Michigan Department of State. And sir, I hope I did justice to your name.
I don't know who helped you, but they were great.
I appreciate it. I appreciate you. Dr. Delsa Chapman, Deputy Superintendent, Division of Assessment, School Improvement and System Support. Dr. Corinne Edwards, Director of the Office of Educational Support. And Mr. Scott Koenig, Education Consultant, Office of Educational Support. Joining us in the room today, we also have Sarah Reinhardt, the Director of External Affairs for the Michigan Department of State. This is an informational presentation. No board action is required. Presenters, welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. We are so happy to be in partnership with the Secretary of State today regarding Public Act 258 of 2023. We were scheduled to have Secretary Benson with us, but due to scheduling, she was not able to remain with us. But she has been very involved as we have collaborated and partnered with this work. And at this time, I will turn it over to Deputy Secretary Edavie.
You got it.
All right.
Thank you. I want to first thank everybody for pronouncing my last name absolutely correctly today. It's a joy. I guess I just had to become Deputy Secretary for that to happen on a consistent basis. But apologies for the secretary not being able to join us. She had a last-minute conflict, so I'll be taking over her role here today. You know, I know in my story and getting to this point, education was extremely important. You know, my parents are both Nigerian immigrants, and they came from a country that didn't have a firm foundation in democracy. I can remember growing up, my mom telling me a story about how in the first presidential election, she had to spend hours and hours in line. And she wanted to quit, and she was 19 years old at the time. And like most 19-year-olds, they want to be doing other things than standing in a long line that doesn't contribute to doing something fun. But her dad encouraged her to stay in line and said it was her civic duty. And that principle was reinforced by my teachers, who always encouraged me to be involved in student government. I remember voting in our mock elections in 1996 for that presidential election, which seems so far but so near and so different, too, from these current times. But these are experiences that were extremely important to me and getting me to this point in my career. And it really makes me excited for the possibilities that we have under Public Act 258. I know that our department and the Department of Education are excited to be able to meet annually to meet these sufficient voter outreach goals that we have to ensure that Michigan's 16- and 18-year-olds have the ability to be fully civically involved in our society. I want to start by thanking the whole entire MDE team, of course, all of you who are here today, as well as the Superintendent, Dr. Rice, for his strong leadership to ensure that we have sufficient civic engagement amongst Michigan students. There are numerous partnerships between the Michigan Department of Education and MDS, as well as nonpartisan partners like the Michigan Center for Civic Education that will help us be strategically aligned to accomplish two key goals. One, that individuals who are at least 16 years old and eligible to preregister to vote are informed on their ability to do so. And two, that we make sure that we have current voter information and resources that are available in Michigan schools. This collaboration is an education-based, nonpartisan, I want to emphasize that, nonpartisan effort to spark civic engagement in young people and encourage them to take the next steps that they desire as citizens so that they can make their part, do their part to shape the future of our state. Each year, our goal is very clear. We want to help students understand how voting works, how they can take part in it, provide students with resources from trusted officials to give them the knowledge that they need to make informed choices. I'm happy to state that we're making progress in this overall goal and that we're coordinating numerous successful outreach programs, including a lot of mock elections around the state. The secretary and I have been traveling to a number of different high schools and middle schools and having mock elections. And they're really just simple and kind of silly. Well, we went to Cass Tech, and there was, we decided, did people like waffles or pancakes? And pancakes won an upset victory. It was very close. There were some demands for a recount. But those kind of fun things do get people engaged in the process. And these open dialogues have really been key for driving our strategy forward. As we know, that students want more election education because we've asked them. And, you know, we believe that civic-mindedness can start at any age. Especially, high school students are eager to learn about the basics of government and elections. And without this foundation, students are more vulnerable to misinformation and disinformation of how our elections work and how they function. So with that, I'm going to turn it over for your side, and I'll take over again.
Thank you, Deputy Director. Slide four. Thank you. Here we share the current actions of the department. A concerted effort involves coordination of programs and resources, including collaboration with MCCE, the Michigan Center for Civic Education. Additionally, our actions here at MDE includes the creation or implementation of a mechanism for providing assurances that Dr. Corinne Edwards, Director of the Office of Educational Supports, will highlight in the upcoming slides. And now, back to you, Deputy Director.
So with this, we, you know, just want to focus again on what the Department of State is doing. We are here to help gather, coordinate, and lift up the current preregistration and registration resources so that everyone has access to it. We're collaborating with the Michigan Center for Civic Education on specific strategies to ensure that there's proper resources in schools for 16- and 17-year-olds. We've also established an online platform for these resources to be available across the state. We'll be partnering with the Governor's Office to have, hopefully, a statewide preregistration date in September. And we're hosting youth engagement roundtables all around the state to really just listen. I think the important thing that we've found through our work is that listening to the students is better than just talking at them. They have very specific views on elections and voting. And so these roundtables have been especially helpful. You know, one of the things we're doing as part of that whole entire effort is we're sending out mailers to over 126,000 students around their state, those who are eligible to be preregistered, with information about how they can preregister under Public Act 258. And you guys may have noticed this. We also had a competition, an I-voted sticker competition. We had over nearly 500 submissions from people in elementary school, middle school, and high school. We'll be announcing the winner of the competition in the next few weeks. Hopefully, my submission, the submission I like ones. I did not submit because I'm not a high school student. But these are some of the samples of the submissions that we got.
Thank you. These next two slides will simply show how schools will provide MDE an assurance that they met the statutory requirement. Additionally, as part of the assurance process, schools can also choose to share what they're doing with the department. I'll turn it back over to you.
All right, well, I'm back. So in Michigan, we have a population between 18 and 29 of 1.6 million individuals. Of that, there are 1.3 million who are currently registered to vote. So we're doing a pretty good job of getting people registered to vote. However, of that whole entire pool that is registered, only 1, 1 million did not vote in 2022. So we're only getting 300,000 people of the 1.3 who are registered to actually show up and vote. Drastic difference that I think concerns all of us. And through our research, we found that those who are in that 18- to 29-year-old demographic, they state that they're not getting as much information about voting and elections. I suspect that we're not speaking to them in the way that they receive information. I mean, we're inundated. And I, I know a lot, I know a lot of you have run for office. So I know we're always trying to get information out there, but clearly, it's not getting through. So we have to rethink how we communicate to young people. And I think one of the things that we've noticed in doing the research is that people who are 18 to 29, those who are actually voting are usually people who go to college or have some college experience. So like 87% of the 18- to 29-year-old demographic that is voting has some college experience. But of that demographic, 40% of them don't have any college experience. So they only make up, there's 40% who actually make up the demographic, but they're only voting at 13%. Drastic difference. And this is something that's really concerning because we're seeing the level of students who are actually going to college dropping over the years. And if that trend continues and it's interlocked with our voting patterns, we're going to see less voter turnout over the years to come. And we know that in anticipating that drop, if it continues, we really have to target people in the K-12 age range, K-12 school range, because everyone goes to school. K-12, hopefully, we're all getting our high school education. But at some point, all of these people are going to school. And getting them in the K-12 grade range is a way to enforce that civic-minded mindset before they graduate so that they're, they're voting and being consistent voters. We've also found in our research that if somebody votes that first time or maybe that second time that they're eligible, they're going to be consistent voter for the rest of their lives. If they don't, their voting record is spotty at best because it's just not a part of their, their life. They've now realized that they don't need it, or that's their feeling. So it's extremely important to engage with young people, K through 12. No worries. So in talking to a lot of different young people, we found that they're really intimidated by the process. And I would like to take us back. I remember the first time I filled out a ballot. I won't say when. I was kind of figuring, I was like, I think, I mean, you don't know because it's your first time. And you may feel a little intimidated to go ask an adult or someone who's voted before about how to do it. So we need to do a little bit better job of teaching people how to actually fill out a ballot, how to actually register to vote. And that's what this preregistration process is for.
Thank you, Nicole. We have definitely, the department, I say we, the department has followed suit in engaging our student voice through our Student Advisory Council, of which the student feedback reflected student voice heard in the MDOS roundtables. It's not overly surprising, but students are speaking. So we have a short video to share with the Board.
Voting is important because it allows your voice to be heard.
Voting is important because it's important to hear your voice at every level of government, from local elections to federal elections. It's more important to provide your perspective and your opinions so that our government can accurately represent us.
It's important for young people to vote because we're a part of the population that deserves to be heard.
Voting allows the government to accurately represent you and your community's values.
Voting as a young person kickstarts a lifetime of civic engagement.
It doesn't matter how politically engaged you are, where you're from, or how much you truly care about politics. Voting is so important. It goes, covers all areas of government, your day-to-day lives. Go out and vote.
This generation is the future of this country. It's so important that young people know how to get out there and vote. It doesn't matter if you consider yourself a political geek or not. Everyone's voice deserves to be heard.
Voting isn't difficult. When you preregister, it makes it super easy so that when it's time to vote, you're allowed to.
Vote, vote, vote.
Vote, 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 vote.
We had a blast, by the way, walking around the Capitol and filming this together. Here are some other comments stated from other representatives from our student voice group. It included language around how PA 258 will assist young voters with the voting process and best ways to get information to young future voters. So I will pass the presentation back to our colleague to discuss resources that are working and moving forward with PA 258.
So I mentioned earlier that we have some resources, specifically some websites. And so I'm going to run through the number of different websites that we have within the state to get information out to young people about how they can vote. Of course, the main webpage is Michigan.gov/vote. You can look up your polling location there and every other resource you could ever want as a voter. But this webpage here, which is Michigan.gov/preregistration, highlights the importance of preregistration for young voters. It also gives young voters a direct link to the preregistration page so that they can preregister to vote once they turn 16 years old. The next slide is our Michigan.gov/elections, which has a lot of different resources about elections, how you can find campaign finance disclosure, election results, et cetera, et cetera. So there are a lot of good information for all voters on Michigan.gov/elections. And then we also have Michigan.gov/studentvoting, which highlights really the specific nature for students who are also voters because that's a very unique subset within the state. And so this website just gives a lot of resources to that demographic specifically. I also mentioned that we're working with the Michigan Center for Civic Education to develop a number of different resources that are hopefully going to be used by teachers all across the state in the classroom to emphasize the need for civic engagement with their students. I met with them last week, so did Scott, and so did Sarah, and they're super excited to engage in this. They range from middle school teachers, elementary teachers, high school teachers. And they are, you know, this is an exciting time. It's a presidential election year. We're going to choose somebody who's going to be the next leader of the free world. And they want their, their, their students to have real engagement with that. And so this process that we're working through with the Michigan Center for Civic Education, I think is going to really tee up a wonderful series of engagements across the state.
So our next steps are to continue coordinating across agencies with partners and with LEAs on this effort. We appreciate this opportunity, and we'll entertain questions and commentary at this time. Dr. Rice?
Thank you, Dr. Chapman, presenters. Good job. At 1:55, we're open to Q and A and, and comments. Dr. Pritchett is a former social studies teacher. What, what do you care to share?
Thank you, thank you, thank you. As a former social studies teacher, U.S. government teacher, I remember the last class that I taught in U.S. government. They were seniors. That's how old I am. They took it as seniors. I said, I don't care if you remember anything I've said during this semester, you better make sure you vote every time there's an opportunity. And I haven't followed up with them, so I don't know if they've done that or not. But my 16-year-old granddaughter got the flyer in the mail, and she has preregistered. A little bit of pressure from Grandma here, but, but thank you for this because the excitement is there. And young people, I find, are, you know, got their views and are getting their information. And to be able to have them be in the process at this point and to understand that, you know, we can show you what a ballot looks like. We can walk you through that process. Because you're right, there's all sorts of misinformation about, you know, do I have to go in person? Do I have to do this? Do I have to do that? So kudos to all of you for this because I think it's a great step in the right direction for voter participation in particular at this point. So thank you.
So I, I do, I forgot that we should also thank Representative Kofia, who is actually the sponsor of PA 258. So thank you, Representative Kofia, for working with all of us to move this process forward.
Thank you very much. Other board members? Senator?
Good job. Just wanted to, I agree. So I've ran a lot of registration events, get out to vote events, and meeting them where they are, especially the young people. I don't know if it was when we took some of the civics out of it, but those games, those democracy games, things like that are great because you said it earlier, you create the first-time voter. The early first-time voter is usually a lifetime voter. And so, but I also convince and make sure, even in my own house, all of us go together, especially for the primary. Because some folks think it's just about the general. Primaries are just important. And we really, really, really emphasize making sure you go to the primaries to vote. And then I wish we could figure out a way to meet folks even where they are. Like, you know, we go to the schools and the churches to vote, but how can we get voter machines in, in the, in the office building, in the mall, where people are? So that, you know, they may have been running around, but they can stop for those 15 minutes. But we got to figure something out just because that, that second group you said, that, that 18, 19, the 30-ish who are spotty, we got to figure out a way to get them back to being permanent lifetime voters.
And, and I would say through that, one of the things we are doing is we have a Secretary of State mobile office. And those, we're, we're sending those all across the state so that people have access to our office and they can register to vote, get information about how to vote. Now, to the point in terms of like mobile voting, that would require some more.
Some additional, yeah, I'm with you on that, you know. I mean, at one point, we were doing the motor voter, but now we got, we, we have the no-excuse voting and go start 14 days out, all of those things, and registering that day at the clerk's office. That actually, we actually did that with some folks this time. So that worked out well to go to the clerk's office, get some folks registered. The clerk's office had first-time voter pens. And so, and every time a first-time voter came in, the entire office and the, I guess, we in the audience, you know, in the lobby knew, they cheered and clapped, and it was a big deal, so.
Yeah, no, I love stuff like that. It's important.
Thank you, Senator. Ms. Tilly?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. And I'm happy that the department is partnering with this. And, and I was aware of it. I wasn't aware of the partnership, but I was aware of the preregistration. So coming off of the, hot off the campaign trail, I was letting, because there were, as I'm talking to voters and citizens, there were young people that wished they could vote. And I let them know, you can get preregistered at 16. And so they were excited about that part. And I've done the mock elections before. Those are so important. We, when I was younger, I worked at the Department of Elections and I worked Wayne County Election, you probably know. But we did the mock elections, and we actually had different elected, local elected officials there as a part of the program. So they got a chance to meet their state senator, their state representatives. And so that was a, a big highlight of the program. So that might be something to think about, too. And then, sorry. The civics part of it, what I'm noticing now is, because, you know, I came up thinking that it's my duty to vote. And a lot, a lot of us thought, you know, and think that it's our duty to vote. And in other countries, they have that mindset as well. And they have penalties if they don't vote in some countries. You, you might get your passport or different things revoked. What I'm noticing now is it's really issues-based. A lot of voters don't understand how politics affects their everyday lives, you know? So it's really that education piece of, hey, do you like the cost of living? You know, do you, what about the price of food? What about the price of gas? What about the roads? Going over how it affects their everyday lives. And if we look at like women's rights, when that was on the ballot, a lot of women felt like this affects me. So you saw more people vote for that. So it's really a, a lot of connecting that we need to do with voters. And then also, another population, and I'm glad you're here at the table so I can speak to you about this. Another population is our felons, returning citizens. Returning citizens do not know that they have the right to vote. And even, I've even had someone tell me that their probation officer told them they don't have the right to vote. And in some states, they don't have the right to vote, right? But in Michigan, they do. So it's really educating that population of returning citizens as well as people in the system. Probation officers should be educating them and helping Probation officers should be educating them and helping them as opposed to putting up barriers. So just wanted to put that out there.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And, you know, I think that, you know, one of the problems we do have, as you said, it's more issue-based. If there's an issue on the ballot or people perceived to be on the ballot, that can really surprocharge engagement. But that's not always the case. Sometimes you've just got to vote for who's on the ballot. And we definitely try to make the case that everything is interconnected. I think what you do here is connected to the local school boards. What happens at the federal level with the President of the United States impacts what we do in the state. It's all interconnected, but people don't always have that understanding, and so it's on us to kind of bring that to them. In terms of returning citizens, we work to make sure that anyone who is leaving prison in the state has an ID. It's something that we've been very committed to since 2019, when Jocelyn Benson took office. We also equip everybody who's leaving with voter information. So it's something that we're actively doing. I know that we can do more, and we're engaging in that, and we're looking into that. So anything that we can do in partnership with you, we're open to it.
Thank you, Ms. Tilly. Other board members? Other board members sharing? Dr. Pew?
And this is a huge first step or step forward, and really pleased by the presentation and the work. You know, and I don't think, what I will say will be profound. I think it just touches upon some of the things that have already been said. But, you know, there are just a lot of people, young people in particular, who are just totally checking out of the electoral process altogether and with full understanding of what it is that they're doing. But just having issues of trust and really feeling that their voice matters. And like Tiffany, Board Member Tilly, knowing a little bit about this and having some experience in talking to voters across the state. And what we're hearing is just that they feel that their voice is not ma, doesn't matter. I think to Senator Bullock's point, when we talk about primaries and coming fresh off of a primary and seeing the lack of emphasis on primaries, even by the parties, particularly the party that I'm affiliated with. But just overlooking primaries and making sure that decisions are not made for voters in that election process. And I think that we can't overlook that part of our democracy and suppression of voice and knowing that those are areas that we have to work on to build trust. Also, what I hear a lot about is the financing of our political system. So these are good steps. They have to go hand in hand with other steps, making sure that we promote primaries and that we're not choosing candidates for people. And then also that we're looking at the financing in politics. But to Board Member Tilly's point, a lot of great young people who are invigorated, ready to be a part, but wanting to make sure that their voices count and that they can make change.
Perfect, yeah. I totally agree. There's always room for improvement in our election system. And we embrace that at the Department of State. There's always something we're, you know, trying to think of, like, can we make that a little bit better? Can we tweak this? Can we do that? Because people aren't static. Time moves, and we have to move with it.
Thank you, Dr. Pew. Senator, back to you.
Well, I mean, we touched on the return of citizens, but I was part of the think tank about the getting IDs to returned citizens. But we could also register them to vote as we give them their ID in return. But I worked the juvenile system, so you got a lot of folks. We also, because we're only talking about prison most often. We're not talking about the kids who are moving around in foster care or the juvenile justice system. Those are the ones we want to be first-time voters, and they're the ones we can give the life story to. Like, this system, this juvenile system is a reason why you need to vote. This foster care system is a reason why you need to vote. They would match the student element.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that's something we have to work on, absolutely.
Thank you, Senator. Other board members? Once, twice, thrice? Can't give it away. Appreciate you. Thank you, Sarah, very much. You did a great job. Ms. Reinhardt, thank you. Ms. Anne Marie Mapes, thank you for your help on the presentation as well. Boarded is 208. And while we're pivoting to our next presentation, we're going to take two quick votes. If I could have a motion to approve the June State Board of Education Board Meetings for June 11, 2024. Thank you very much, Dr. Robinson. Motion, Senator Bullock, a second. Any discussion associated therewith? Hearing none. If we could do a roll call vote, please.
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
And Tilly?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And if we could have a motion to approve the minutes of the Legislative Committee Meeting of August 1, 2024. Dr. Robinson moves. Dr. Pritchett seconds. Any discussion associated therewith? Mr. McMillan?
Is there audio of this available?
There is.
Thank you.
Any, anything more for the good of the group on the Legislative Committee Meeting minutes? Hearing none. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
And Tilly? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Ms. Evans, the next item on today's agenda at 2:10 is a presentation on Goal 7, to increase the numbers of certified teachers in areas of shortage. This presentation will provide updated and new information about programming affecting Goal 7. We welcome our presenters, Dr. Michelle Harmela, Deputy Superintendent backed by popular demand; Ms. Kelly Brozansky, Interim Director and Strategic Implementation Unit Manager of the Office of Educator Excellence; Dr. Sean Kotke, Manager in the Office of Educator Excellence; and Ms. Candace Vincent, Consultant in the Office of Career and Technical Education. This is an informational presentation. No board action is required, but it is an important presentation, and there may be a pop quiz. Presenters, welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Rice, and good afternoon, board, again. We have shared our efforts related to Goal 7, Increase the Numbers of Certified Teachers in Areas of Shortage, with you before. We're going to today highlight some of those efforts and also share some new ones, that strategies that we're using to attain this goal. So we're going to hit things on a much higher level today, not all the depth we often provide. And I'll hand it over to Kelly.
So when we look at Goal 7, to increase the numbers of teachers in areas of shortage, we're really examining the quantity, quality, and diversity of our workforce. First, we'll dive into quantity. And one area of success has been in teacher preparation program enrollment. Between the 2011 and 2012 and 2016, 2017 school years, the enrollment declined 59%. 2016, 2017 school year enrollment has rebounded and increased 56% by the 2021, 2022 school year. This slide breaks that down a little further and gives some additional detail. You have seen this before. And these data are expected to be updated to reflect the 2022, 2023 school year in the coming months. Additionally, we are seeing increases in specific fields due to intentional initiatives, which are driving the changes that you see here on this slide. We have focused on transforming the quality of teacher preparation for some time. Our programs are clinically centered to provide experiences in classrooms throughout the program. The programs are centered on the needs of the whole child. Multiple innovative and expedited pathways are available to prospective teachers, and programs are collaboratively designed by districts and educator preparation providers. Finally, all of Michigan's educator preparation institutions are nationally accredited and focused on continuous improvement. Multiple educator preparation providers have increased access to students from historically underrepresented populations through focused scholarship and fellowship programs. Over the past seven years, there's been an increase in the numbers of Black or African-American and Hispanic or Latino teachers added to the workforce. Specifically, we've seen an additional 1,317 FTEs of Black or African-American teachers and an additional 216 FTEs of Hispanic or Latino teachers. More detail about this increase appears on this slide, which you've also seen before. And these increases are possible due to a range of initiatives in various stages of implementation to support Goal 7, to increase the numbers of certified teachers in areas of shortage. This list includes the initiatives that we will share about today. As you know, in fiscal year 2020 and earlier, the State School Aid Act did not include any investments to address the teacher shortage. Small investments occurred in subsequent years, with significant investments coming in fiscal year 23. While additional investment will come with the 2025 budget, today we're going to share updates about those primarily started in fiscal year 2023 and 2024. Dr. Sean Kotke will start us off with updates about the My Future Educator Fellowship Program.
Right, thank you. Since the start of the 2022, 23 academic year, over $27 million in tuition and fees to teacher candidates has been paid through the My Future Educator Fellowship Program. Now, this program administered by our colleague in MyLeap offers scholarships for tuition and fees to qualified teacher candidates in approved Michigan educator preparation programs. The large investments reported in the first line of this slide establish sustaining funds to ensure that there are funds available should the demand for funds exceed annual allocations now and in the future. Recipients of the fellowship must commit to teach in Michigan public schools or public preschool programs for at least three years. 60 teachers received fellowship funds and graduated from educator preparation programs in the first year of the program's existence. MyLeap tracks employment outcomes to assess fulfillment of that commitment to teach. In their first semester post-graduation, 98% of this initial group of graduates received certification, and 92% of them were employed in Michigan public schools or in public preschools. MyLeap also administers the My Future Educator Student Teacher Stipend Program, which offers $9,600 per semester to candidates during their student teaching experience. And to date, over $55 million in stipends have been dispersed to teacher candidates. Back to you, Kelly.
To support mentoring and induction, $50 million has been allocated for a program consisting of three parts. The first is for the development of curriculum and other resources to support the mentorship of teachers, administrators, and school counselors. The second is to evaluate program effectiveness. And the third is to provide $49 million in grants to districts over five years for stipends, professional learning, books, materials, staffing costs, and contracting with professional organizations to provide mentoring services. The first of these grants, the Materials Grant, has been awarded to Western Michigan University to develop those materials to support mentoring and induction programs. The Evaluation Grant closed on July 25, and our team is in the process of reviewing those applications. The Third Grant, the District Support Grant, has an application that is expected to open in fall of 2024. Another program to support teachers is the Student Loan Repayment Program. This program is designed to provide financial support for educators' student loans. $225 million has been allocated for eligible educators who are in the Public Service Loan Forgiveness Program to make their monthly loan payments. The first application period has ended, and over $19 million has been awarded to 546 school districts to support 9,571 eligible participants. The statute has changed for fiscal year 2025, and in accordance with these statutory changes, MDE will select a vendor by October 1 for administering future applications. Access to this application will be announced at a later date. Educators are also supported with their professional development and ongoing learning. $1 million was allocated for eligible educators who are working towards National Board Certification for the first time. In June of 2024, over $365,000 was awarded for 185 teachers in 18 districts, with the next round expected to open in fall of 2024. Additionally, eligible educators who already earned National Board Certification by January 1 of 2020 are supported with a $4 million allocation. In April of 2024, $765,000 was awarded to 126 teachers for this program. The next round of applications for the recognized achievement portion of this is expected to open in early winter 2025.
The Rural Educator Credentialing Hub Grants awarded $15 million to Central Michigan University to lead a consortium of rural school districts and educator preparation institutions, which are depicted on this map, with experience in supporting rural schools, to support no-cost pathways for rural educators and future educators to earn certification. The Michigan Consortium for Addressing Rural Education Expansion and Retention, MyCareer Resource Hub, will utilize assessments of experiential and non-traditional learning to expedite preparation experiences. The MTTC Test Fee Grant reimburses first-time test takers of any Michigan test for teacher certification for the full amount of their registration fees. We anticipate spending nearly the full $1 million before the end of this fiscal year, and the legislature has allocated $1.1 million for the next fiscal year. The Special Education Teacher Tuition Reimbursement Grant incentivizes certified Michigan teachers to pursue additional endorsements in special education. This grant program, which reimburses teachers up to $800 per credit hour for their program, began in 2022 and is supported through $5 million in federal funds authorized by the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act for state-level activities. To date, 211 teachers have received funding, helping drive the increase in the number of special education teachers that was referenced in Slide 7 of our presentation. To help districts fill vacancies in special education programs, MDE began issuing waivers in 2018, 19 to allow districts to assign certified teachers with special education endorsements in any area to eligible special education programs in areas different from the teachers' endorsed areas. Districts must apply for this waiver and demonstrate that it is necessary to stimulate improved pupil performance. Now, expedited special education programs are offered by nine universities in our state. These programs allow teachers to earn certification with endorsement in special education only. These candidates complete a full preparation program with student teaching in a special education field, but do not also complete a program or student teaching in a general education content area, which significantly shortens their program of study. This has proven especially popular with new teachers and paraprofessionals transitioning into a teaching role. A partnership between Eastern Michigan University and Washtenaw ISD was featured at the January 2023 Board Meeting, if you recall. Alternative route providers were authorized by the legislature in 2020 and then reauthorized again this year to prepare teachers for special education endorsements. The law requires that these programs be a minimum of 32 semester credit hours or the equivalent in clock hours for non-credit-based programs, and that candidates complete all coursework, clinical experiences, and testing prior to being issued an interim teaching certificate with special education endorsements and being able to serve as a special education teacher. These programs have been especially popular with veteran teachers seeking to add endorsements in special education. In total, 85 teachers have been issued 91 new endorsements in special education since this route was authorized. Turn things over to Candace.
No, me first.
Oh, so, sorry.
So the board has heard from students and teachers from Michigan districts about the Explore Program. As a reminder, these programs are locally-designed future educator programs for students in grades 6 through 12. These programs provide early and flexible access to coursework and clubs. And to support this programming, MDE provides state-specific curriculum, free professional learning for instructors, flexible staffing guidance, and grants to fund staff planning and student recruitment activities. In designing Explore Programs, MDE built models to work into existing local structures and accommodate many types of students. The Michigan Virtual Course Offering is very unique. While most Explore Programs run with local support...
While most Explore Programs run with local support, this online offering ensures that all students have opportunity for access, and this course especially appeals to students who otherwise may not have a program in which to enroll. Our grantee performance reports have helped us to measure our progress towards expanding access to future teacher programming. Grant-based programming has supported over 1,000 students across all seven offered grade levels, and those students represent a greater diversity than our current teacher candidates and our current teacher workforce. We also wanted to continue early awareness of education careers by reaching students in grades six through 10, and found that 43% of our grantee programming was offered to middle-school students. And finally, 58% of Explore students are economically disadvantaged and may rely on grant-funded tuition opportunities, such as those that Dr. Cocky mentioned earlier, in order to reach certification. These grants have provided opportunities for a variety of student activities, ranging from educator preparation program signing days, campus visits, or volunteering. New this year, we were able to pilot a grant with a dual purpose: to support the in-school student Explore Programs that I just described, and to also support those Explore Program graduates who are starting their pathways to teacher certification. The pilot program provides funds for tuition costs for Explore graduates in their first two years of college, who are taking coursework to prepare them for an educator preparation program. Ultimately, both of these grant purposes share a goal: to build a Grow Your Own system of support for future educators to return to their district to teach. Which brings me to Grow Your Own School Staff Grants. $175 million in grant funds was allocated to provide a no-cost pathway to reduce barriers and increase opportunities for support staff in schools to obtain certification. Over $129 million in grant funding has been awarded across 139 districts, reaching over 1,300 teachers and staff, with more awards pending. And next, I'll pass it to Ms. Candace Menford to share about another program for students interested in education.
Our Future Proud Michigan Educator Launch Program is meant to be complementary to the Explore Program mentioned earlier. The two initiatives share the goal of informing students about careers in education, and both set the foundation for continuing studies in two- or four-year institutions. Both programs are based on a set of specific student competencies which are aligned with our educator prep competencies, and both encourage creation of partnerships with Michigan-approved educator preparation programs. Launch differs in that it offers students the opportunity to earn a workforce credential that qualifies for entry-level employment. Because it is offered under the umbrella of state-approved career and technical education, Launch may also serve as a pre-apprenticeship option for the K-12 teacher, early childhood educator, and child development specialist USDOL-registered apprenticeships. Five years ago, with support through the Comprehensive Center, Region 8, this CTE area was given extra support with the goal of strengthening and diversifying the educator workforce through career pathways based on local needs. This began as cross-office work with Career and Technical Education, the Office of Great Start, and the Office of Educator Excellence, and now sits as a cross-department initiative with MDE, MyLeap, and Labor and Economic Opportunity. This initiative was recognized by U.S. Department of Education back in November, and the video highlighting the work is on U.S. Ed's Best Practices Clearinghouse website. I included a link for all of you if you'd like to go and watch that later; it's a little too long to share today. CTE students can choose the pathway and credential that makes the most sense based on their individual interests and their district needs. The chart on this slide gives a breakdown of careers that are supported with these credentials for both immediate employment or through continued education at those two and four-year institutions. The CDA is an internationally-used credential necessary for employment in early childhood. The Michigan Youth Development Associate is for out-of-school time employment. The Registered Behavior Technician is a national credential used within special education services. And the Michigan Apprenticeship Readiness Certificate II is a credential that allows for CTE to count for up to half of the time that a worker spends in a USDOL-registered teacher apprenticeship. This slide shows our five-year growth. We're pretty proud of this as a project team. You can see that the number of CTE programs has grown from 55 in the 1920 school district to 132 in 2324 school year. Our early-middle college offerings, allowing students to earn an associate degree or equivalent to an associate degree, have moved from four in 1920 to 20 now. Our CTE student enrollment, which is tentative; we are still collecting data on this, but our preliminary number is that our enrollment has moved from 2,230 students to 4,146. And credential attainment in our very first year of the project was two. We're proud of those two, but now we are at 295 so far reported in the 2024 school year. It is, again, important to note that our data collection in Career Tech is not done until August 31, so we could see these numbers move a little bit higher in enrollment or credential attainment. And then finally, it just simply included a few pictures so you could see students in action here. Our team was very intentional in targeting rural areas of the state with no access to the program. We had no programs in the Upper Peninsula in 2020, and now we have programs available to every single student in the state of Michigan who would like to earn a credential through career and technical education. And we also wanted our Career Tech students to see how many different potential careers fall under that umbrella of education. There is teaching, there is out-of-school time, there is early childhood, and much more. So, thank you. Hand it on back.
In addition to the programs that we have shared today, there are other impactful programs that influence the educator workforce in Michigan. These programs include, but are not limited to, the programs that are listed here on this slide. And we thank you for your time and the opportunity to share with you our progress today. We're happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you very much, presenters. You did a great job. Board members, questions? Dr. Robinson.
Thank you. First of all, that's a ton of information. You presented it really well. Just from the field, the student-teacher stipends are a game-changer. They are changing whether students can stay in their placements, whether they have to go into debt. It's a great program. Thanks to the legislature, and thank you for tracking that information. I'm curious, can a student get the future ed fellowships and then move right into student-teacher stipends?
Yes, and they can even get them concurrently. So, if they are taking classes, like a senior seminar, at the same time as student teaching, you can get money to pay that tuition and fees, and you can get the stipend.
Okay. Second thing is, can you talk a little bit about the reasons for that pretty large gap between the numbers of enrollers and completers? You know, attrition is something we look at in all phases of education, but I think one of the numbers I saw there, too, actually, 12,048 enrollees, 2,781 completers. Is there a timeframe in which that data is collected, and what are the issues there with such a large drop-off in the numbers?
So, the enrollees include people at multiple points in their program, so it's not a single cohort of students like the completers would be at the end of the year. So, we would be looking at across a period of time in institutions where they are counted. So, we would expect to see enrollees to be significantly higher than the completers.
So, the enrollees include everyone from a freshman just electing to pursue education all the way to student teaching and beyond?
Potentially, once they've made that education choice.
And then, the last thing is, I think we all agree on the need for more tuba clinics in this program, so thank you very much for the information.
Senator, presenters, there's always, bless you, there's always one.
There's actually several on this board.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson, for tooting your own horn. We appreciate that.
Meeting adjourned, too.
The board members, Ms. Lipton.
Yeah, just a point of clarification. The $9,600 stipend for the student-teachers, over what period of time is that? Is that a student-teacher's?
During the student-teaching semester or multiple semesters. So, if somebody has two, like Michigan State's program, two semesters of student teaching, they can get $9,600 in each of those semesters.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, just to note that it really is a script flipper, isn't it, that instead of paying to participate in preparation to become a teacher, we're paying people to prepare? I mean, we're not paying them enormously, but it really is a script flipper in a pretty substantial sense, and that's why the department, three years ago, recommended this to the state legislature and to the governor, and they funded this particular activity. It's not a buyer's market anymore the way it was when I started in public education. It's a seller's market, and in a seller's market, you have to incentivize in a different way. Not that I'm an economist, I'm a former high school French teacher, but I'm just saying. Thank you for the question. Mr. McMillan.
On Slide 9 regarding diversity, it says multiple educator preparation providers have increased access to students from historically underrepresented populations through focused scholarship and fellowship programs. So, focused mean, does that mean that those colleges are using in some form skin color to determine who's offered the scholarships in fellowship programs?
No, but we know that amongst our economically disadvantaged students, a disproportionate number of students of color, and so it benefits those students as well as other students who are economically disadvantaged.
Okay, so it's economically disadvantaged?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McMillan. Other questions? Thoughts, comments, concerns? Section 27A and 27C, the fellowships, scholarships, and the student-teacher stipends respectively. You mentioned those are administered currently by MyLeap. Last year, they were administered by?
Treasury, Department of Treasury.
That's right, the Department of Treasury. And so, that's an example of a function that migrated from the Department of Treasury to MyLeap.
Yeah, it's part of the My Student Aid Division, which covers all higher education aid. That whole unit moved over.
Came from Treasury to MyLeap. Yeah, thank you very much. I appreciate you sharing that. If you had done this presentation five years ago, what slides in pertinent part would you have presented today?
Slide on quality and teacher preparation improvements, because that was work that was done without any special allocations, and we launched that work starting in 2015 to make a more clinically-centered program and to focus the focus of teacher preparation on whole child and effective instructional practices.
Now, every program at this point is a clinical preparation, we would argue. Okay. Apart from that, what else would have been in that presentation five years ago?
I can say that last picture with the students from my, with the tuba clinic. We had students in those types of placements in our high schools back when I was teaching within this program, and so the ability to place a student into any type of a work-based learning situation has been there for our CTE programs.
Very good. Thank you very much. Anything else that board members care to share? Please.
Just, I guess, in light of the conversation that we've had today, and will be ongoing and probably was here however many years ago, that you've mentioned special education teachers, and do we have, and I know that wasn't necessarily the focus of this conversation, but we're in the, on Slide 27, you talk about in response to the ongoing substantial need for appropriately-certified special education teachers. Do we have those numbers as far as, and maybe this is something later that we can talk about, as the need in that area?
It's vacancy and shortage data are hard to quantify, in that many districts don't report a vacancy. If they just didn't hire a teacher, they didn't hire a teacher, and they don't report that as a vacancy. That is one of the reporting improvements that we hope to incentivize, foster, nurture with our partners in the field, so that we can have a realistic number of, like, how many unfilled positions are there in our state.
Give an example of this. So, years ago, we had a Latin teacher at one of our high schools. Latin teacher retired at about 70 years old, maybe a little bit older. We tried to fill the Latin position. We could not fill the Latin position, and at some point, the Latin position became a Spanish position. We had to offer a language, additional language capacity for our students. They needed to fill their schedules, they needed to take a foreign language, but we couldn't replace the Latin teacher. So, there are examples of that. At some, you know, at some point, that was reported as a Latin vacancy, and at some point, it was reported as a Spanish vacancy, and at some point, it was a non-vacancy. Yeah. Other questions? Other questions, comments, concerns, thoughts? No? Very good. Thank you for your presentation. We're going to pivot to the presentation or remarks of our board president, Dr. Pugh.
Well, you know, hopefully, everyone had a great summer, and we are back and excited about students that will soon be entering classrooms, and I do just want to make note of the conversation and many of the statements and the reflections from public comment that have been focused on special education. As many, some of us at this board table have been talking about is that at the local level, we just know that we have to do better for this population, and this is not something that we've just started talking about, and we just know that we have to do everything that we can to make sure that we have adequate and equitable funding, that we have professionals that are in our buildings that can address the needs of our vulnerable populations, as was said during one of the comments. And then, we'll have conversation further about our mental health dollars and making sure that we're allowing our educators, our school districts, to be able to better prepare the classrooms for those professionals to be there. This is, special education is a topic that all board members have been focused on and will continue to be, and will continue to hear how the department is meeting this need as well as helping our local districts to address the need as well. So, I will leave it at that for my comments.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Reported by the state superintendent, I want to acknowledge that a number of school districts, small, but a number of them began last week. Flint Community Schools began last week. By our next state Board of Education meeting, all districts will be in session. Best wishes to student staff and families for a great school year. There's nothing like the beginning of a school year in terms of optimism and hopefulness and excitement for young people. Congratulations to Michigan poet laureate Nandi Comer, who recently received $50,000 from the Academy of American Poets to launch a statewide billboard campaign celebrating contemporary Michigan poetry. The billboards will feature excerpts of the works of contemporary Michigan poets. Comer is one of 22 poets laureate in communities across the country to receive fellowships from the Academy of American Poets, and it was a special treat of the Library of Michigan and the Michigan Department of Education to name her poet laureate a year and a half ago. That was an exciting moment for her, and it was a very exciting moment for the two institutions as well. The summer has been busy. Among other work, Chief Deputy Superintendent Dr. Sue Cornell and I had the opportunity to represent Michigan at the Council of Chief State School Officers Conference in North Dakota last month, along with other state superintendents and their chief deputies, and a few prairie dogs, and a lot of bison. Board member Marshall Bullock and I represented Michigan at the Education Commission of the States Conference in Washington, DC, also last month. Chris Janzer, our assistant- Chris Janzer, our Assistant Director in Michigan's, in MDE's Office of Educational Accountability and Assessment, presented at that conference. Like to take the opportunity to introduce a new staff member to the MDE family, Dan Centers. He is not at the middle of the table, as one might expect from his name. But he is here. Nonetheless, Dan, if you could stand. Dan is the Special Assistant to the State Superintendent. He comes to MDE after working as the Chief of Staff for Senator Dana Polhankey. In addition to his experience in the legislature, Dan has taught and has served on his local school board. Welcome to you, Dan. Thank you. And as board members, you are aware, he is replacing Ms. Allison Shrewsbury, who is hard to replace, but who has been kicked upstairs in the organization and is now my Chief of Staff. So congratulations to her as well. The next item on today's agenda is the state and federal legislative update. We will now hear from Mr. Bob Wheaton, Director in the Office of Governmental Affairs, and Dr. Cheryl Kennedy, Legislative Liaison in the Office of Public and Governmental Affairs, and herself a longtime educator with the state and federal legislative updates. Gentle people.
Good afternoon, everyone. It's been a while since we've been here, and the legislature's been out of session part of that time. But Dr. Kennedy still has some information to update everyone about. Dr. Kennedy?
Thank you very much, Mr. Wheaton. Good afternoon, board. Today, you already heard presentations on Goals 8, 3, and 7, including as they were reflected in the budget. So we're not going to go over a lot of that. The governor did sign the school aid and MDE budgets since we recently, since we last met. And as you heard, we are anticipating a supplemental sometime in the fall. In addition to the budgets, the governor also signed PA 99, which broadens the list of qualified expenses under the Promise Zone Authority Act to include things like transportation, childcare, and the cost of professional credentials. So that's a good thing. On a recent podcast, Senator Polhankey shared that the charter transparency bills, Senate Bills 943 through 947, should be getting a hearing in September. There are no updates as of today regarding when the dyslexia bills will be passed out of House Education Committee for a vote on the House floor. But when we hear news, we'll make sure to update you in the board brief. And that's all I have for today.
Thank you very much, Dr. Kennedy and Mr. Wheaton. Other questions, questions from the board? So board members, you pushed expressly the issue of charter school financial transparency. You pressed it in June of '21 with our former board president and colleague, Dr. Cassandra Ulbrich. You required a FOIA request of charter schools and traditional public school districts across the state to test whether traditional public school districts and charter schools would produce the same financial information. They did not. We did an extensive study within the department with the information that we got back from that FOIA request. You put forward another resolution in December '22 around charter school financial transparency, again pushing on the state legislature, which had done nothing in this area for years. And finally, you recently did another resolution on an expanded version of this topic. So your efforts are getting some attention in this regard. And there is an increased understanding that what's good for the traditional public school district goose is good for the PSA gander. Any questions or thoughts before we move on to Dr. Pugh's resolution? Please, Ms. Lipton.
I just wanted to thank you for uplifting the Promise Zone expansion bill. That's something that the statewide association, along with other organizations, as well as this body lobbied to recognize that there are many, many scholarships that cover tuition and mandatory fees. But there's still a lot of obstacles that students face in terms of additional cost of attendance. So this expansion bill is going to couple very well with the community college guarantee and really allow the attainment of post-secondary education to reach far more of our economically disadvantaged students. So thank you for uplifting that.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Anything more for the good of the group?
On the transparency bills, well, do you know if they will be reintroducing the FACT Act? Or will it be something different?
They are currently, you can look them up if you like. They're currently introduced. Senate Bills 943 through 947 cover financial audits, contracts, fiscal transparency, bidding for charter schools, authorizer oversight, and also the sale or lease or purchase of buildings.
And in the budget, I saw that there is the transparency dashboard. Will that, that will coincide? Or we don't know yet?
The transparency dashboard is separate and distinct. It's a separate effort. It is, it is not as substantial as the transparency in these pending bills. And we can certainly share on that. Perhaps the next legislative, next legislative committee, I think that would be a good place for that. It's really pretty basic in terms of transparency. Each of these is a step in the right direction. The bills that have just been introduced are three big steps in the right direction to permitting us to better understand charter school financial management as we understand traditional public school financial management. Yes. And remember, I mean, the reality is, these are both public schools. These are, you know, there are 285 public school academies. They receive public dollars. And we should understand what's done with those public dollars, the same as we do in the 540 or 550 traditional public school districts in the state. Anything more for the good of the group? Dr. Pugh, would you like to move your resolution?
I would like to move my resolution that I don't have in front of me. Let me see. I think I have it here. So I can read it. I move the resolution for Michigan State Board of Education calling for Michigan lawmakers to undo cuts to fiscal year 253AA mental health and school safety dollars. And I will read it.
If we could, if we could have a second and then read it, please. Do we have a second, Ms. Lipton? Thank you very much. Dr. Pugh, back to you.
Whereas the U.S. Surgeon General has declared gun violence a public health crisis and has emphasized the need for greater mental health care. Whereas in June, the State Board of Education passed a resolution which called for the Michigan Legislature to make recurring in the fiscal year 25 budget $328 million in Section 3AA funding for children's mental health and school safety. Whereas the governor signed into law a budget which was passed by the state legislature that makes only $25 million in 331WA funding recurring, critically cut the fiscal year 25 budget to fund much-needed mental health services. Therefore, be it resolved, the Michigan State Board of Education is calling for a supplemental budget to be passed to restore these funds on a recurring basis.
We have a motion. We have a second. It's been read into the record. Dr. Pugh, would you like to say anything additionally?
You know, we have two presentations that touched upon the need for mental health dollars, the fact that we have improved and thanks to this body and the department on dollars that are available for mental health services. But we know that there is so much more that is needed, whether we're talking about referrals and making sure that those referrals are reaching the appropriate and appropriately trained staff and making sure that our students are able to go to school in well-staffed, as well as a safe environment. And then we just want to make sure that the work that has begun in addressing this mental health crisis, that we don't stop here before we get to where we need to be. As mentioned in the resolution, our U.S. Surgeon General is finally bringing light to the public health crisis of gun violence and definitely making sure that he attaches some of the drivers of that gun violence, which is also a crisis, a mental health crisis. And we don't want our school districts to be prevented from preparing and continuing to staff up. And as was mentioned in a presentation today, is there's not only a shortage in schools, but now there's, that shortage in schools has now caused a shortage in other service providers from having the appropriate staffing. So there's a lot of work to be done. This is not the time to take the, our foot off the gas pedal. And we need to continue to staff up and make sure that our children are appropriately serviced while in schools and are going to schools that are safe. And so I just ask that we put this resolution forward.
Thank you very much, Dr. Pugh. Other reflections? Mr. McMillan?
So, Chairman, I have been trying to email my two amendments. I'm sweating because I'm trying to, I'm removing the wireless and reinstating and moving, and I just, it will not go. They're relatively simple. So I would like to move amendment, the first amendment, insert after the last word before the period, after basis, comma, "As long as parents or guardians must be informed and involved anytime gender identity is a topic of counseling or treatment."
All right, let's just, let's slow down and make sure we've got it exact.
Okay.
Because it seems pretty straightforward here at the table. And I can tell you, when we get away from the table, it's not always as straightforward.
Actually, it just went.
What's that?
It just went.
As long as, but I don't. As long as parents?
As long as parents or guardians must be involved, informed and involved anytime gender identity is a topic of counseling or treatment.
Okay. Board members, do you feel that you have that?
They were all on the email, and so we all have it.
Very good. Okay, all right, very good.
I second that.
Okay, so we have a, we have a motion to amend from Mr. McMillan. We have a second from Ms. Snyder. Any discussion about the motion to amend? Mr. McMillan?
Yeah, I think it comes as no surprise that I am concerned about this topic, that the state of Michigan, through the MDE website, is instructing teachers to conceal, or how to conceal, these matters, the use of pronouns, different pronouns, different names that schools may use for students so that at parent-teacher conferences specifically, it talks about how to hide it from the parents and also any correspondence home. I think it, the video mentions, report cards that you make sure that the parents won't know that there's a different pronoun or name that they're using at the school. So I, and as I mentioned before earlier in the meeting, it's clear that in these matters, there is a, you know, data, studies show that there's a higher level of suicide, suicidation, suicide ideation. And so there is certainly data that says that parents should be involved. And so I feel that this is critical if we're going to talk about mental health dollars.
Okay, so we have a motion. We have a second. Motion's been read into the record. Mr. McMillan has spoken to it. Do any other board members wish to speak on the amendment as offered?
Yes. I just want to state that there are LGBTQ children, as well as adults, who have come out and have been disowned by their families. They've come out and they have been hurt physically, emotionally, psychologically. They have every right to protect themselves. And if they do not feel comfortable with coming out yet, that's their right. Now, in the case, and she already addressed, if there are issues where someone is thinking of maybe hurting themselves or someone else, by law, they have to address that. They have to address that with the parents. Otherwise, children do not have to come out by law until they're ready. So I will definitely not be supporting this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Philly. Ms. Snyder?
There are also students across the country who have been encouraged by their schools. And their parents went along with it because the school said it was the right thing to do to have a double mastectomy well before childbearing years, because this is the direction that a narrative is going in. And that particular student, who represents a large body of students who take hormones that suppress the immune system, make people at risk for getting cancer and being ill. She's now suing the school district and her own parents. So she was actually encouraged before the age of 18 to think these things, to adopt these values, to take these actions. When she's not developed, right? I hear, I hear from the left all the time, oh, 21, you can't make decisions until you're 21 because you're not developed yet. Okay, then we actually have to have good, solid guidance. And leaving parents out of the discussion of gender dysmorphia, taking treatments that it really does seemingly appear will be more and more available in schools over time. And having things like double mastectomies before your childbearing years, before you're developed enough to make that decision, is absolutely wrong. There's no doubt about it. And when I listen to the resolution you're presenting to the table here, I, I think about what it takes to lead in this conversation, this extremely important conversation of asking our society and the state of Michigan to value mental health care and for it to be available to students like we heard their stories and scenarios in the presentation. I think we all agree in mental health services being available to those students. And yet, we're not having that conversation because Pam is reading something conflating gun violence with mental health. Do you realize the Parrots from Oxford, who lost their children to gun violence, came to our retreat this spring and begged us not to politicize the issue? They begged us to make it about mental health, mental health that resulted from the pandemic. If you want to talk about mental health issues that we should be addressing, the most common issues that students come to the table with are depression, anxiety. That can be impacted by any factor that's going on throughout that child's day. If you want parents to be engaged and you want to develop consensus around the issue, stop politicizing it. Again, the parents have begged you to stop politicizing it. And yet, here you are with another resolution, completely politicizing the concept that you could develop consensus around instead. So yes, I second, I second the amendment because I think one of the biggest things we should be doing is separating the issues that are dividing and not unifying people, especially around mental health. We want parents to engage. We want students to engage. We don't achieve that outcome by politicizing the issue.
We have a motion. We have a second. Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Do we have any other discussion associated therewith? Any other, this is on the amendment. Any other, this is on the amendment of Mr. McMillan relative to the base motion of Dr. Pugh. It is solely on the amendment. Please, a roll call vote, Ms. Evans.
Bullock?
No.
Lipton?
No.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
No.
Pugh?
Nope.
Robinson?
No.
Snyder?
Yes.
Tilly?
No.
Motion fails.
Mr. McMillan, I believe you have a second.
Yeah, my final one would be at the very end, after recurring basis, insert after the last word before the period, quote, comma, "As long as vouchers or tax credits are available to parents or guardians to be used for mental health for their children."
So, so we've got a motion. Do we have a second?
Yes, you do.
Do we have a second? So can you please speak to what you would, because I, just a point of clarification, what would you use the vouchers or tax credits for? Typically, we hear about them for
Yeah, well.
purchase of education. Are you suggesting that they would go to the open market and purchase mental health services?
Well, I appreciate the question. As was mentioned during testimony, sometimes districts don't have, we know there's a lot of, there's shortages of mental health support or mental health providers, counselors at schools, or the person may not be somebody that the child gets along with. Like I said, I've, I've known families that have had to go take their child, one, two, three, four different counselors before one clicked and before it worked. And, and the other three would have actually been harmful to the child if, if they remained. So the parent, I believe, knows what's best for the child, the state doesn't. And at the very least, these vouchers or tax credits could be used to go to a provider outside the system, outside the government system, a, a, whether it be faith-based or not. But I think that that's at the very least, as far as expanding it, I don't know, there could be discussion about that. If, if something would help the student, that is neither of those, I would hope that we would think that that might be good if it would help their mental health. But I mean, right now, let's just say that it was simply to allow them to go to a private provider or faith-based or secular provider.
And in your, in your scenario, who, who would have access to those vouchers or tax credits?
And I, I am not, I'm not, I don't have staff to try to flush all of this out, quite frankly. I mean, if you want to loan me somebody, that would be great, but you know, I am not exactly sure how, what it would look like, but I think the concept is pretty clear. It's, you know, who gets it, whether they have to pass a test that they truly do need mental health, whether they, you know, they attempt one time and then it's not working, so then they can, you know, they can get the, get the voucher, tax credit. I don't know. I mean, I-
These wouldn't be vouchers to 1.4, the parents of 1.4 million public school children. You would have to, in some way, certify or have certified that your child has a mental health concern that merited a voucher or a tax credit?
Can I jump in?
You know-
I'm just asking. It's your, it's your proposed amendment.
Sure.
Thanks. I think the infrastructure's actually there, and we discussed it this morning. There are NPIs like he suggested with the ISDs and with mental health counselors and providers. As a matter of fact, like, it's a pretty big network of people. So yes, if there were a mental health issue identified and parents are engaged and give consent, then they have the opportunity to say, you know what, we can take care of this outside of school hours, or we would like to take care of this inside of school hours with your moment in time, you know, registry of counselors or with this counselor and we'll be in contact. It can be an honest infrastructure that's there and available to those who need it.
I'm, you know, not to be obtuse, but I'm not sure what a price index has to do with a, with a voucher.
I would just say if there's a will, there's a way. If there's an interest, I've been in the legislature, you can figure out how to do it. Like I said, if I had staff to go through the specific statutes, you know, you have a full-time job here, this is something I get paid $100 a meeting to do once a month. So, you know, I don't have the staff to flush this out. I think the concept is very basic and very clear. If I went to 99% of people on the street in Michigan and mentioned this, I think they would understand it.
Glad to be part of the 1%. Dr. Pugh?
I don't know if, if it was clear or not, but there's been a shortage of professionals that we're talking about for quite some time. Many of us in public health have known that there's a need for mental health professionals, particularly for our young children living in impoverished communities. Then there was the Flint Water Crisis. And post the pandemic, it became more evident to, to others and, and more profound. So with the shortage, the shortage just became greater when, as was said at the end of the table, just a few hours ago, that a lot of professionals moved within the, the school system. So the people that we would be vouchering to for, for referrals, for parents to refer to, are not there. There is a need and the resources that this resolution is calling for would, would help fulfill that need. So I don't know who you would be referring to. The other thing is that these professionals follow the same rules, at least they should. And you should know that as a former legislator, that professionals have reporting requirements. And so what those professionals who sat at the end of the table and, you know, succumb to your rhetoric, and they have to follow the same guidelines as, as others. And I would be quite concerned with parents getting dollars if they were parents that would be proposing things like isolating children at a time of crisis that you did at the table earlier today. So I would vote no to that amendment, as I would to your earlier amendment, as we did with the earlier amendment. And-
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Ms. Snyder?
Just a few fact checks. So there actually were 10874 mental health staff workers that were added to schools just this past year. And Michigan saw an increase in helping professionals in mental health in 2023 as well. So even if, even if we're continuing to discuss the shortage of mental health care providers, then certainly such a proposition as having funds that you could use outside of the school for mental health would be helpful to that shortage. Because if they're not working in the school district, but the student needs the services and, and the way we've upstaffed is still not enough to cover the gap, then certainly that would actually be helpful. So if you think of it as a solution and not as a never-ending problem that you, you're not working towards solving, then it's a different, it's a different story. And then I'll just, you know, again, correct the record for the most important factor right now that youth are still struggling with. And, you know, it says American Psychology Association. The American Psychological Association says that COVID-19 as a pandemic made mental health worse than any other factor in our society. So the, the hope here is that our government will never do what Whitmer did, and that is shut our schools and not open the doors back. And so then therefore, mental health will not become worse, but rather better over time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Snyder.
Let me just add one thing.
Please.
To, just reply to President, I would just say that if there, if it became known that Michigan is now, you know, giving vouchers and tax credits to parents, I think you would see mental health professionals moving into the state of Michigan from other states. They would say, there is now more available funding, we, you know, let's, let's help fill that need because now there's dollars available. So I do, you know, it's, I, I don't think it would hurt, I think it would only help. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. McMillan. Ms. Tilly?
Don't parents still have the option to take their children to outside providers?
Well, not with this money.
Priv, not with that money, but they have private insurance, they have Medicaid, there is, there are different pots of funding, grant funding, different programs that they can enroll their children in.
Not at 14, though.
There are, there are certainly opportunities. The reality is, is that we have a shortage of mental health professionals, both within the community and in schools, as you well know. And-
But if, if the parent doesn't feel comfortable, because I know that was one of the issues. If they don't feel comfortable with the options that the school has provided, they can seek, they can still seek counseling elsewhere.
And they do. They, they, they do sometimes instead of, and they do sometimes in addition to. Nothing precludes that currently at all with private insurance, with Medicaid, as you point out, in group, individually. That already takes place, yes. But not with this funding, as Mr. McMillan points out. Yes. Yep. Anything more for the good of the group on Mr. McMillan's second amendment? If not hearing none, a roll call vote, please.
Bullock?
No.
Lipton?
No.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
No.
Pugh?
No.
Robinson?
No.
Snyder?
Yes.
And Tilly?
No.
Motion fails.
Okay. So we have the, Dr. Pritchett, please.
I have emailed to everybody, I did a reply to Tom's email, it appears it's gone through, Liz got it anyways, just to suggest the change to the, therefore be it resolved. Pam, if you want to take a look at that, I just put after the word restore, it's specific language, I'm not sure you want that specific language in there, but the $328 million in Section 31AA funding on a reoccurring basis. So what I did was just went back to what had been changed with FY25. The downside to that is you put a number out there, you know, then you're not leaving any room for flexibility for the legislators. Not that they're going to necessarily take this resolution and read it verbatim. So I just offered as a suggestion, just to clarify that last phrase, as far as restoring these funds.
I will accept that.
You're accepting it as a friendly amendment? Okay. And, and are you accepting it as a friendly amendment?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And, and to get friendly on top of friendly, can we delete either the dollar sign or the word dollars?
Oh, did I put both in there?
Yeah.
Well, I wanted to make sure.
Okay.
Either one, whichever one you'd like to delete.
Okay. All good. So we have, we have the motion before us, it's been seconded, there's a friendly amendment that's been offered by Dr. Pritchett, it's been accepted by Dr. Pugh, and there's Lipton. Anything more for the good of the group before we vote? Mr. McMillan?
So the base resolution is amended, I would still, as long as this, as long as Michigan Department of Education insists on instructing teachers and staff to deceive parents regarding the pronouns or the names that are being used by those students which are directly tied to mental health issues, gender dysphoria and perhaps others, you know, I am not confident that these monies would necessarily be used for, for good. Certainly, any kind of deception to parents is not good. So, and also, I, I definitely think that for, that not giving parents the choice as far as who would be the best provider, you know, is not something that is good for these funds as well. So I don't understand why we wouldn't support that as well. So I won't be able to support this amendment or this resolution.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. McMillan. Ms. Snyder?
I just want to explain my no vote at this point in time because it, it is not a no vote on supporting funding for mental health. It's a no vote on this particular resolution. It's a very politicized resolution that won't achieve parental and student engagement. And I think when you want to focus on mental health and you want to increase engagement, then you have to actually word things, message things, and, you know, genuinely pursue that. Age of consent in Michigan is 14 years old, which means, you know, some kids that are not even out of eighth grade yet are making decisions on behalf of their own mental health. And we can't even agree here at the board table that, you know, making your own decisions on gender dysphoria and identity is something that you shouldn't be doing without parental involvement. We can't seem to come to consensus that parents should be engaged and should have to give their consent for those discussions to happen. And so even when it comes down to the dollars and where the dollars are going and coming, and whether it's voucher or not, or a backpack or not, or funding that the parents could take to a private entity that has an NPI like ISDs do, what I do not appreciate this morning about the presentation was how hard it was to have the discussion of the 29,000 students that did get mental health help this last year. And the fact that he did not share with us that there's even been a bird's eye view of, once Medicaid dollars have been applied for Medicaid students, 31N funding, 31AA funding, we have got multiple sources that students are, are getting mental health funding. We can't even look at that from a bird's eye view, but we're going to release a statement as a state board of education and say, this needs to happen. We don't, we haven't defined the problem. You know, you, you take your job seriously first by defining the problem. You don't just put out politicized statements that don't define the problem and don't help people to understand how that problem is actually going to be solved. So again, not a no vote on acknowledging mental health as a crisis, not a no vote on acknowledging that mental health needs to be funded for students, certainly not a no vote on engaging parents and students in, in mental health, but, but a no vote on this politicized statement.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Dr. Pugh?
For the record, I just would like to say that the only thing politicized here is this recycled dog whistle, you know, something that we heard in the last election cycle, and I guess we'll have to be listening to from here on into November. And I would like to call the vote.
I appreciate that.
And, and this is overall mental health. This isn't even specifically for, this is overall mental health.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, this is not specifically for anybody. We're not politicizing anything.
It is not specific to any group of children, any, any sexual orientation, any gender identity. The vast majority of children who have mental health problems, as Ms. Snyder pointed out, don't have mental health problems associated with their sexual orientation or their gender identity. It's associated with anxiety and depression. So the vast majority of mental health challenges are prosaic, some of them are developmental, some of them are more endemic, but they exist nonetheless. And to somehow equate or if conflate mental health challenges with sexual orientation and gender identity is problematic.
And, and just for the record, even if we did want to tailor it for a specific group, that would not be politicizing it either. That would just be saying that a specific group needs help and they're on our radar. But this is in, in general, so let's please call the vote.
Right. There are more, there are, there are people who believe that those who need more should receive more. It is in fact the basis upon which the School Finance Research Collaborative Recommendations for School Finance in the state are founded. Those who need more should generate more revenue for their, for their education. Before we vote, I want to correct three pieces. One, there was tremendous clarity about school funding around children's mental health. There are charts in your presentation, you can re-refer to them if you like. They begin with fiscal year 18 and before, where nothing in the State School Aid Act, precisely nothing, was there for children's mental health. It went up to $31 million, change in fiscal year 19. I vividly remember your presentation to MAISA five years ago next month, in which you were proudly talking about this $30 million. That was great. And I was really excited about that. As a new state superintendent, $30 million seems like a lot of money. And then you reflect upon what it is, given the number of children that we have, and you realize it's 20 bucks a child. So it was good to get into the State School Aid Act, wasn't it, board members? But $20, $30 million sounds like a lot. $20 per kid, not so much, they're the same. So it was good to get into the State School Aid Act, wasn't it, board members? But $20, $30 million sounds like a lot. $20 per kid, not so much. They're the same. And over a period of time, we raised that to this fiscal year, fiscal year '24, where we're well in excess of $400 million in the State School Aid Act for children's mental health, including but not limited to $107.8 million for 31N, portion of 31O that remains, the last portion of 31O funding, which was '22, '23, and '24, and then 31AA funding. Fiscal year '25 budget cut 72% of that out. Bless you.
Salvation.
Leaves $107.8 million in 31N funding, $25 million in 31AA funding for public schools, $1.5 million for non-publics, non-recurring also, for 31AA. That's a 72% cut. I think we're being pretty clear about what the numbers are. I think we also need to be clear about our numbers, not on money, but on children served. The presentation clearly noted, Dr. Golzinski's presentation, Scott Hutchins' presentation, our friends from the ISD's presentation noted, that these were service numbers for Section 31N funding, not for Section 31O funding, not for Section 31AA funding. We've done a tremendous job in the last half decade, five years, six years, of improving children's mental health in the state. But going through a pandemic doesn't help children's mental health. Experiencing the trauma of a pandemic doesn't help children's mental health. And cutting back funding that has been used to raise the number of providers is not going to help us either. We have added more than 1,000 mental health professionals in the last four years. We'll be updating those data soon to be over the last five years. That's a big deal. And I believe that mostly that increase is going to endure, board members, irrespective of this cut. Because I believe that mostly that increase is a function of 31O funding and 31N funding. The 31O funding required in the fourth year for local school districts to take over the cost of those mental health professionals that were fully funded by 31O in year one, two-thirds funded in year two, a third funded in year three, and are now solely the responsibility of local school districts year four. And in addition, a big chunk of that increase was 31N funding, and that endures. But I am concerned about 31AA funding, cut in the fiscal year '25 budget, which reduces the momentum in addressing children's mental health issues in the state. So to clarify the funding, because I'm not sure it was clear from, from an earlier comment, it's very clear in the PowerPoint presentation. Thank you, Dr. Golzinski, for that, and for, and to Mr. Hutchins as well. There were two other statements that were inaccurate. I'd like to correct those. They were made earlier in the day.
Is the vote called, Mr. Chairman? I believe the vote was called.
The chair has the floor. There was a reference to our requiring local educators to go through particular training to get 31AA funding. There is no such requirement. There is no professional development required by the Michigan Department of Education directly, number one, or through the federal government or state government, number two and three. And there particularly is nothing associated with Section 31AA funding. Moreover, there is no requirement of training as a, not only as a condition of receipt of funding, but there's no requirement of training, period. The people who come through our training to better work with gay and trans children are educators that believe that this is a part of their responsibility. They do so voluntarily. Ms. Evans, a roll call vote on Dr. Pew's resolution with the friendly amendment, please.
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
No.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
No.
And Tilly?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Board member comments?
I chose nonviolence today.
Thank you very much for your board member comments, Senator Bullock. Other, other board members, their comments.
Yes, I do.
Please, Mr. McMillan.
I just wanted to harken back and just say that I, regarding special ed, I do miss the days when we had Michelle Fecto here, though a Democrat. She had no problem holding the feet to the fire of the state superintendent and the department and advocating special education. She adopted many kids, so many kids. It was so impressive, and it has been impressive. And I think a good number of them were special ed kids, and she really understood the issue and, again, really advocated for them. And it's too bad that there's not somebody like her on this board that, on the other side. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll let her know. I, I agree. We do miss, miss, miss Fecto. Miss Tilly?
I actually said the same thing at lunch, that I miss Michelle here at the table because she was the expert. This was definitely her area. However, I do want to be clear that a lot of the work that is done as a state board member is not just at the table, but it's what we do when we're not at the table. And a lot of us are advocating for special needs children. A lot of us do get phone calls from parents and advocate and are aware of a lot of the issues that they are facing. And we also, and I know, I can speak for myself, I contact Dr. Rice consistently about issues that parents are facing, and specifically for our special needs children. So just because we don't always agree on some, some of the implementation parts, that does not mean that we're not aware that there, there aren't issues and we aren't working on issues because we are. Thank you.
Ms. Tilly. Ms. Snyder?
I want to be very clear, Dr. Rice. When a vote is called, it is not an opportunity for you to get on a soapbox. You answer to this board. It is not the other way around. It is not unilateral power. And you need to start behaving like a chair that examples that kind of leadership. It has been going on for too long.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder.
You are welcome.
Any other, any other board member comments? Future meetings of the--
I chose nonviolence today.
So I understand. Thank you, Senator. You've been consistent in that in the last five minutes. Future meetings of the State Board of Education are Tuesday, September 10th, Tuesday, October 8th, and Tuesday, November 12th at 9:30 a.m. If there are any topics board members would like to recommend for future meeting agendas, please notify Ms. Evans or me. Board members, it is 3:31, and we are adjourned. Board members, anyone who has five minutes for a very brief show and tell, I'm happy to, to share. If you don't, have a great day.